Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court, and as we do every regular meeting and special meeting, we start with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance will be led by the Commissioners' Court. Please rise, everyone. Thank you.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas is one state under God, one individual.
Thank you very much. First item, public comments. W., any public comments?
Nope. I've got one.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just want to say that this week, we lost a member of the legal community. Her name was Lisa Garcia. She's a lawyer out of Hidalgo County, and she had spent a good portion of her life serving the community. She was a member of the Texas Rural Legal Aid and committed a lot to access for justice. And so, if you'll just, this week, remember her, she was a great person, a great jurist, and she will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item will be consent items.
I just need to abstain on C.
And on C, Judge, we just, if we could approve it subject to some changes being made, please. I see.
Subject to changes.
C.
Any other items?
Judge Protem, two JJ, we can pull that one out for discussion.
I'm sorry, which one?
Two JJ.
Okay.
It's on travel for the Rio Grande Communications Group, that's...
Which item?
Yeah, triple I. The date is changed from the 15th to the 29th.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the Commission wish to pull any items?
Just, on item... Two E, the funding source will be designated during the budget process for the FY-13 budget.
Anybody else, Commissioners? If not, I need a motion to pass, consent items.
So on E, Pete, it would be subject to funding? Approved subject to funding?
Yeah. Except for item E, which is subject to funding, item triple I, which the dates have been changed from the 15th to the 29th, and on item C, Commissioner Garza will abstain. And it's subject to change... Why is it subject to change, W.?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Double C, or double J, or no, C. It said it was subject to change.
Just a couple of changes we're going to make, Judge needed approval subject to those changes.
All right. Need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. That was, that was quick. Items for discussion, action items. Item A, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Well, we have double J.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Judge Protem, Commissioners, the reason I pulled this one, approval for the funding, for the summer program, it's a little bit over 14,000. We would like to use fund balance, I mean, I'm sorry, lap salaries.
Okay, this will be for Cameron Park and...
And Brown Road.
We didn't budget this from last year, we did this last year also.
Right, right. What we did was, we submitted the budgets, but they didn't get in, you know, the additional staff, the supplies and so on. It didn't get approved in this year's budget. It's 14,000, it's just a little bit over 14,000.
Do you have enough in lap salaries to cover? Second.
Got a motion second to approve item J. J, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry about skipping that. Okay. Now, item three, A, budget amendment, line items, transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge Protem, before you placed, one, two, three, four, five, five budget amendments for additional grant funding for parks, border prosecution and illegal dumping. There are several line item transfers within the individual departments, reallocating funds, nothing really extraordinary. Salary schedules, there is DA's office for the extension of the border prosecution grant to August 31st. The mental health transport, that was, the court had taken action on that previously. Funding has been approved, and so the salary schedules being changed. And then, several for the juvenile probation department where they're reallocating funds between slots. Yes?
Need a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of claims, item B.
You were sent out and also placed before you registers, there's ACH payments in the amount of 272,739,04. Check register from check number 300045 to 300818 in the amount of 2,933,533 dollars and 40 cents. Within that register, there's one void, check number 300448. That check was not issued. It will be reissued at a later date. It was the incorrect individual. There is one stop payment for check number 299379. That was a, the vendor reported it lost, so that will be reissued at a later date. There's also check register 300825 to 300958 in the amount of 3,137,685, 3,137,685 dollars and 25 cents. Then there's payroll in the amount of 1,652,042 dollars and 41 cents. There is a void check, 422281. It was reissued. There was money due to the county, so that check had to be reissued. There's check number, void check number 422486. Because of termination dates, they had to go back and adjust for the individual. Their check for insurances, and then there's check, ACH 225324, and that was for overtime that was incorrectly paid, and so that was reissued. If you have any other questions.
Do you recommend approval?
Yes.
So move.
A motion, Commissioner Benavides?
I have a question, Javier.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Garza, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. On 00300672, Graves Humphrey Stall, 27,000, is that one month of collections?
Let me see.
It's on your, I guess, third page of the handout. It's page six of the register.
What was the check number again, I'm sorry?
It's 00300672.
Yeah, there's several check registers.
It's this handout that you gave us, the third page?
Oh, okay.
The daily check register? It's the third page, but it's page six because I guess they're double page.
Yeah, there's actually, for each court, five, one and five, two, it, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it probably is.
Just for one month?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's what the, the collection company gets, and they get...
For that 15%.
That's the additional, okay.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion second, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, approval of minutes? Are we ready?
I haven't had a chance to read it.
Move to table.
Have a motion second to table, item C, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, consideration approval to utilize a job order contract method of delivery for construction of a courtroom at Cuyahoga Rucker Detention Center.
Judge and Commissioners, a couple of meetings ago, we discussed the possibility of building a courtroom at Cuyahoga Rucker Detention Facility, and we'd like to propose to utilize the job order contracting, and then come back to the court with a recommendation.
So what do we need?
Just approval to authorize staff to utilize...
So move.
We have a motion second, any, any, any questions? Pete, I have...
This will facilitate the process.
Yes, expedite it, exactly.
My only comment is, I think we need to look at the expansion of this into a bigger complex eventually, and, you know, you and I both know that the Sheriff's Office is bust at the seams. We're probably going to have to add jail space at some point, and this particular addition right now, I want to make sure it works or blends with, with future plans, so if you can please check.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, that's the first thing we'll do.
Okay. Yeah, we want the court of a sufficient size that if later on, we get a designated criminal court, they can handle it.
There's no doubt that that's really necessary. Okay, I have a motion second, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, consideration and authorization to approve the dedication plaque for the new Los Fresnos Annex. Commissioner, Lectures?
Second.
Have a motion second to approve, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding Cameron County's legislative agenda for the 83rd legislature.
I've got one item to report on, there might be others to report on, but on the, we had, the court had previously passed the resolution, and we had a bill, and it went through the process. I believe Commissioner Garza and I testified at one of the hearing in the House side on the existing vehicle registration fee that we have up to $10. There was a bill that Representative Lucio sponsored to increase that to $20. As I mentioned, it went through the process, it came out of committee, but when it came out of committee, the chairman of the committee added language that a referendum was required. We have an opportunity to add a rider to a bill that is pending in the Senate from Bear County. Bear County pretty much wants to copy what, what Cameron County has done with its RMA and utilize the structure that we have with our RMA, and, and I've been in discussion with county, with Bear County officials, as long as an attorney from the Bear County District Attorney's Office, on, on how to set up the structure. But nonetheless, they have a bill pending that would authorize the Commissioners' Court in Bear County to impose an additional vehicle registration fee. We feel we can put a rider to that bill, and we passed out a resolution that, that will be in support of the vehicle registration fee without the referendum language, and, and staff would recommend approval of the resolution by the court.
We need a motion on this particular one.
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion second on this particular item. Any other discussion on the legislative agenda, Pete? Any, any other questions, any issues about...
We probably do have other reports, but you probably need to take action on this one.
Okay, let's go ahead and take action on this one first. Have a motion second, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay.
Judge, Commissioners, just a couple of items. The SpaceX bill that was pending this week should be on the floor tomorrow, out of, or I'm sorry, out of the committee and onto the floor, so the obstacles that were there earlier in the week, I think, have been cleared up, and so that bill should be moving. That bill is the one that allows the space launch activities on and open beaches, in particular Boca Chica Beach. We have HR 3125, which was the overweight corridor bill that expands the overweight corridor to the Los Indios area. That bill passed yesterday, and it's, should be headed to, to the Senate side. It passed in the House. There was a bill, and I don't know if anyone wants to talk about that, but it's a probate court bill. It was tied into an omnibus bill, and I think originally, we had said that we wanted a 2017 date on that. Right now, it's got a 2015 date on it, but there is talk about moving that to 2017. And then the other bill that gained a lot of attention yesterday was a university bill or the medical school bill that is amended in the Senate yesterday for the first two years of the school to be located in the, in the Hidalgo County area, and the second two years in the Cameron County area. So that bill passed in committee yesterday, and, and so far, it's set with that language. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Just need to report on one bill, our, it's House Code 3124, establishes the technology fund, allowing us to assess a $2 fee. That bill is on second reading today in the House, should be read on third reading tomorrow and out to the Senate by tomorrow evening, and we'll be working with Senator Inahosa to get that, to get that bill moving there and hopefully get that passed out of the Senate. I don't know if you have any other que, I'd like, David mentioned regarding the probate court, the bill that we laid out in the House stated 2017 date, the bill that we laid out in the Senate stated 2017 date. For whatever reason, the chairman of the committee in the House decided to go with a 2015 date in his bill. That bill, it differs from what's, what's in the omnibus Senate bill, so we are working with Senator West to see if we can't take that, that bill to conference committee, or we can strip that language and substitute it with the 2017 language as the Commissioners' Court approved in a, in a resolution, so that's what we're working on right now with them.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead, Commissioner.
And hopefully, it looks like resolution occurred on the Brownsville Port Isabel Annexation Bill, you know? It looks like we're headed in that direction. If resolution locally did not occur, it's going to occur legislatively, it looks like, so.
Okay.
But, you know, the closer you get to the end of the session, the dirtier the sausage gets up there.
Yes, yes.
It's unbelievable, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's not a real pleasant place to be because things that, you know, you could, we're working on a bill all the way through, like the technology bill, and, you know, we have a certain section, or a certain faction, I should say, of people up there that think that a technology fee is necessarily something that we shouldn't have.
Right, it's a tax.
And if one person in that committee tags that thing, man, it just throws it out.
That's true.
So...
We're also working, I'm working with Chairman Phillips. He has a bill that allows certain counties of a certain size to be able to house, I guess, inmates in, in municipal jails. I know we have an issue on South Padre Island, especially during spring break and 4th of July, Labor Day, being able to transport people off the island, and we're trying to amend it to where they allow a county with our size, with a barrier island, to, to be able to do that as well without violation of standards. So we're, there's about four or five bills that we're trying to amend, we're going through. It does get a little dirty and, and difficult at times, but it's, you can still manage.
I don't know if we should consider, though, anything as far as a resolution on the medical school, just in support of the original bill? Do we need to do anything, or is it history?
I'd like to make a comment on that, and I'm, one, one thing I'd like to say about the medical school is I'm very disappointed that the city of Brownsville didn't join Harlingen and Cameron County in supporting the school being in Cameron County. Brownsville being the biggest player should have, had the most gain from this, and it just didn't happen. It looks like the, the medical school is going to Hidalgo County, at least the first two years, and we had a chance, based with the fact that the rack is located in Harlingen, we could have had that entire facility in Cameron County. So going forward, we always talk about working together as, as, we're all one, we're Cameron County, but there's always, like David just said, it gets real dirty towards the end, and deals are cut, and special concessions are made to basically not show up to hearings and make comments that should be made publicly by members of, part of our delegation, what should be our delegation, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of negotiations going on right now on this, on this legislation, on this bill, behind the scenes with all the parties, players. So we can ask, you know, our, our senator and our delegation if something like this would help, and if it does, we'll put something together, but I don't know, you know, whether or not that would help at this point, or hurt, or what, but we'll, we'll ask. I know the judge was up there, he was on record, you know, saying something about that, so we will check with him just to make sure that we're not doing something that, you know...
David, my concern, my concern is, if you're not going to support it, or somebody, one of us, or one of the entities is not going to support it, tell us.
Yeah.
We're not going to be, we're not going to be with you on this one because...
Totally agree.
That's fine, I mean, they're entitled to their, their position, but don't leave us out there just, just hanging.
Yep.
Well, and, you know, Ernie, with all due respect to you, and I don't mean to interrupt, you know?
Go ahead.
We had yesterday, our, our local representative from Brownsville and our local senator from Brownsville, you know, sometimes you wonder how much people do for an area or whatever, but after, after spending a couple of days up there, especially this week, it's like, you know, these people, Senator Lucio and Representative Oliveta, you know, really showed true colors in supporting their communities.
Yes, they did.
And I publicly want to thank those guys because, you know, they, they take beatings on a regular basis over there, and sometimes it is a difficult thing to do, to sit there when you know that everything is stacked against what you're trying to get done, worked for for 25 years, and at the last minute, you know, a deal is cut and it's gone, you know? I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, those guys need to be commended.
Yes, they do. Commissioner, anything?
I've got a couple of comments. You know, I, I think the entire medical school bill, I think we need to look at it in its totality because it's not just a medical school bill, it's a University of Texas bill, University of Texas School in South Texas, because this new bill is actually going to give us funding for a new university down here, and there probably should be more dialogue and communication between the counties and inclusive of all the entities, because, you know, it's unfortunate, like Commissioner Garza said, that, you know, you have a group of people working for so long to try to get something done, and at the last minute with an amendment, something can drastically shift. The important thing, though, is looking at the big picture in its entirety, this bill will give us the ability to get into what they call the PUF, the Permanent University Funding, and that is a source of money that we in South Texas, and UT Brownsville and UT Pan Am, had never been part of. So the funds coming from the rest of the state were limited. This bill would put us in the PUF, South Texas in the PUF. And so, it's unfortunate that the wrangling and, you know, shifting of where the medical school should be, or where it's going to be, could affect in the overall entirety how the bill gets passed and what's affected, because in the big scheme of things, if the rest of the state sees this as, oh, those guys down there in South Texas, they're fighting, let's not give them anything at all, then we're going to be at a larger deficit and a bigger problem. So, you know, I commend Senator Lucio and Representative Oliveta as well for all the hard work they've done, but maybe we as a Commissioners' Court need to reach out to some of the folks in Hidalgo County and, and try to get everybody to the table and find a compromise that would work, that everyone can somehow be in agreement with, and that will bring some benefits, because, you know, that new permanent university funding money that we get is going to allow us to build the new UTB campus, or what will be the new UT campus, to replace the old UTB campus. And so, we're going to need money to do that, and there's going to be a lot of different components to that new university that maybe this can be an opportunity to try to negotiate to get some more of that in Cameron County. If, if the writing's on the wall and it's not going to happen for us, I mean, we don't know what, what the ultimate outcome is, but at least it gives us an opportunity to try to work something out so that everyone in South Texas is working together for the benefit of our futures, future students.
And I agree 100% with that, you know, but I also think that the way it was all originally set out legislatively was to allow for the Board of Regents at the University of Texas level to use their site selection committee.
Yes.
Go through a process, be as objective as possible as to where things needed to be, and, you know, allow the, the institutional educational group to make the decisions as to where things go. At the end of the day, you have the legislators deciding where to put things, and the innuendos and, and exactly what you said, Commissioner Sanchez, is what I had, one of the individuals from Hidalgo said, you know, why are you all here? You know, you're jeopardizing your permanent university funding, you know, like, you know, you're, you're threatening your funding. That's not the case at all. Our, our issue was, we supported the site selection committee to do their evaluation and put the university wherever is best for the region, you know? But for legislators to, based on maybe an hour's worth of discussion, decide where to put a medical school, you know, with total disregard for the University of Texas Regents, whose job it is to make decisions of where money's spent and where things go, is kind of ludicrous, you know?
Okay, I need a, a motion to acknowledge the report, legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second to acknowledge, all in favor, signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action pertaining to recent City of Combs demands that the county vacate space used for family learning center.
Judge, could we have item G, item H, and item I discussed after executive session, please?
Okay. Let's go to item J. Emergency request, requesting authorization to replace the 30-ton air conditioning unit at Cameron County Harlingen Outreach Center located 1102 South Commerce.
This is just a pro forma approval, right? Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Before you, before you vote on that, please, let me just make one comment about it. The, this particular project is not a county, Cameron County project per se. The lease on this building was signed by the JPB, and in that lease, there's provision in there that says that the less, the less E will take care of air conditioning. This has come up, and, and the idea of, of the air conditioning is something, you know, from my viewpoint, is up to the JPB what they need to do. They have now asked for the county to provide administrative services to this project in the form of having Marcelino Ibarra to coordinate this, or maintenance, I should say, coordinate the, what it takes to analyze the situation, get this air conditioner installed. Now, this is not a building under which we are required by law to furnish to the JPB or the JPDE, JP Department, Juvenile Probation Department, Juvenile Probation Board. And so, pro forma is not something that would actually apply to this item, that's why I asked that this be put on the discussion item. Pro forma is, is something we have done administratively as an accommodation to the JPB and the JPDE, because they do not meet as often, and sometimes they need pro forma approval just so that the engine can start to get checks cut and travel arrangements and whatnot, you know, routine more, more or less things. What this does is, is it would draw the, the county into the process of taking care of a building we do not own, we do not lease, and is, which is really an adjunct program, as I understand, maybe Tommy could clarify that, to other juvenile probation department in... to other juvenile probation department endeavors. Uh, that being so, I thought the court ought to know that this would draw us into this situation that is really not ours with attendant potential for liability. Uh, let's say something goes wrong at the installation, or someone gets hurt, or the roof collapses, or something like that. Uh, it is, it's, you know, I feel like it's my duty to point out that this is not necessarily, or isn't actually, a pro forma approval matter. Uh, rather, it would engage the county in a project that really is not its own project and is really, it's not liable for.
So, can we, can we approve it pro forma then?
I, I think you may approve pro forma the acquisition, the air conditioning for the, for the approval of the checks and whatever they need to do to use their money to get this done. But it would not be a pro forma approval to further go to say that the county will be involved somehow in the administration of this project or consulting with the JPB to put it all in. As I understand it, Mr. Romita has located the money for it, or he has that. And so, you know, um, if technically speaking, after years of trying to keep this straight and clarify, uh, what is the county's and what is the juvenile probation board? And consistent with our position that the juvenile probation board and probation department are state actors, state, uh, entities. Uh, we, you know, my recommendation is that we would deny, without an agreement of some sort, an interlocal agreement, if you will, between the county and the juvenile probation board, the request to engage anyone at, at, at the county to assist or advise or administer the installation of this air conditioning.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, we did, as part of our outreach programming, we did reach an agreement, it's been almost two years now with the City of Harlingen, to lease the facility, the old Harlingen Police Department, for a dollar a year for 20 years. And, and that's, that $20 has been taken care of and, and that lease was a lease that was actually reviewed by Bruce and, and, and his department before it was signed. And Judge Leal signed off on it.
I don't think that's true. I don't think we ever saw that lease. In fact, I think we found out about it because of some publicity pertaining to one of the programs over there.
No, it, it was forwarded to your department for review before we ever had the city sign it. But anyway, the Judge Leal signed the agreement along with the City of Harlingen. We renovated the facility, uh, moved in, are doing all kinds of programs out of the facility. And one of the stipulations was that the, the City of Harlingen pays the utilities and the water and sewage and all of those things as, as part of the agreement. And we would be responsible for anything related to maintenance, air conditioning, et cetera. And so, we actually have already replaced a couple of the units on that roof, uh, prior to now. Uh, they were smaller units. This particular unit is, is the biggest unit on top of that building. And we secured the, the, it's approximately $34,000 to replace that unit. We've already secured the funds for that, but myself, not being a, a maintenance person or a project coordinator or having that kind of experience, not to the degree that I think that it would take to oversee this project. We thought it would be best if the maintenance department would assist us with it. Because it's something they're quite familiar with, so that we could make sure that the project proceeded, uh, and was successfully completed. Uh, I guess my hopes was that, that that would be the case, that they would, that the county would be willing to do that since the services that are coming out of there are for county citizens. I mean, we serve citizens from all over the county for GED and drug and alcohol counseling, the recreation center. Everything that comes out of there serves all the citizens of Cameron County. Uh, and I guess if you do agree with Mr. Hodge and not approving for the maintenance department to oversee the project, then all I need from you is to tell me, well, you proceed on your own and good luck to you. And, uh, and then that's what I'll do.
What do you need the maintenance department to do, Sir Romita?
Well, to, to sit and air condition of this magnitude, it's kind of like when we had, we had the ones that were replaced at the Gooseby Building. You've got to have someone there to watch the, the company that's doing it, to make sure that they're doing it according to specs and, and that they're not.
So it's not to actually do the work?
No, they won't do the work. We actually train, train with just, train has already had, submitted a turnkey, uh, bid.
I think, you know, I have my motion. I don't, I don't see a problem having one of our people that does that on a regular basis oversee this project. And my motion stands to include, you know, that type of activity occurring and being done by, you know.
Let, let me, uh, get a second on that motion and we'll continue to, continue the discussion.
Okay.
Do I have a second on that motion? Yeah, I have a motion, a second. Go ahead. I think, okay, let me, let me make a comment. I have no problem either, Commissioner. I think the only issue is if our maintenance people are actually qualified to see a 30-ton unit get put in place and make sure the, the rafters are fine. You know, I, I guess, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Hondo, you know, it takes some experience and knowing how to read blueprints and.
Right. And if I can, if I can address that, one of the, one of the, the, uh, questions that, that we had going into this is that the unit that's going to be replacing the unit that's currently there, it's about 1,800 pounds heavier. So there was the question that, hey, to make sure that structurally the, the building can, can hold that.
Yes.
But we have found a solution. Uh, the company train that's put this bid together actually would build the unit on the ground and only, and then run everything up into the roof to the blower, which removes probably 65, 70% of the current weight that's there now. So that, from a structural perspective, that's been addressed. Uh, the only thing is, is that I really need someone that knows more about this to make sure that they're doing all the things that they're supposed to be doing to install it. And I know that they have a lot of experience doing that because they did that at the Gooseby, replacing all the big units that we had over there after the hurricane.
Again, my only concern would be, is when the old unit's taken off, sometimes there's wear and tear on a roof, ceiling joist and wherever it's sitting, where it's been sitting for X amount of years, and it needs to be basically, uh, expected to make sure.
I have a structural engineer waiting for me to call him, uh, from Harlingen, and we're contracting him to come. Once the unit is removed, for him to come and do an assessment.
Okay.
To make sure in case we, there is any repairs that need to be done, uh, to that particular area once it's removed, so we can strengthen it. My assumption is that it's not going to be of a, a problem because we're removing 65, 70% of the weight off the building. So it's, it's, I just don't see it as being a problem, but we, but we do want that expert's opinion.
Sure.
In order to proceed with the completion of the project.
I have a question for you, Mr. Romita. Uh, you mentioned previously that, um, other units have been replaced.
Mm-hmm.
Have we gone in there and supervised it in the past?
No, actually, the City of Harlingen.
They did.
Helped us with that. They sent their master electrician and, and, because we didn't have a master electrician and on the county payroll. So they helped us out with that. This particular project, they said, you know, just, it's a much bigger project. And they suggested that, you know, we should get the county to step in and, and oversee it and.
Now, my only comments or question, so Bruce, your concern is if we have someone supervising it or looking over it, if someday someone decides to sue over the issue, we've taken on responsibility that we don't currently have?
Yes, that's exactly what it is. Um, this, this is, like I said, not one of our buildings. There's, there's also an issue of, you know, if we're, if we treat these two entities as two different entities, one state, one county, and yet we give things of value to them to accomplish that, which would be the consulting services, then we're getting into constitutional issues regarding expenditures of money. We have now for at least five or six years taken a tact.
Of separating?
To try to avoid being intermingled, I mean, from a liability perspective, with operational, you know, things that go on with the JPB.
So if we had an interlocal agreement, the way we engage in activities with other entities, this wouldn't be a problem?
The interlocal is the solution, you know, to do this for, and it can be a nominal amount of consideration considering the object of the whole program, you know? I, I don't think there's any question that the program itself is, is a, a good program. I mean, that's never been the issue. Uh, and should the commissioner's court choose to, you know, make some contribution to that program in terms of the expertise to oversee this, this matter, then I think you're, that's up to you. I think that's something you can do. My only point is, is that ordinarily between two separate governmental agencies, before you begin to, you know, swap valuable services or things, you have an interlocal agreement. And in that agreement, we can limit our liability, we can find some relatively minor measure of consideration. I don't know what the going rate for that kind of service is, but if we were to do that, then we can do this all properly and everybody's happy. And we, we avoid, you know, unnecessary intermingling, you know, our assets and our talents and our liabilities with the potential liabilities of the JPB on this project.
But we, we constantly have projects where county personnel assist in things that happen at the juvenile department, right?
No, we don't.
We don't?
What we do under law is we furnish them buildings that they are used in the juvenile probation department programs. This is an associated program. This is not something that statutorily, as I understand it, comes within the purview of the juvenile probation department duties and services that it's statutorily described to do. This is a, a, it may be that it's an adjunct program, Tommy, I don't know the nature of the program in, in any detail.
In response to that, I mean, really all we're designed to do as a probation department, as many probation departments around the state already do. I mean, we, I'm actually told that I'm actually crazy to do some of the stuff that I do because there's so much work involved. But all we're really required to do is provide probation services for kids that are adjudicated and placed on probation. You know, all that other stuff we do with GED academies and vocational trade schools and all that stuff, that's just because we're trying to do, do the right thing. And, and we have a huge need in this community with a 50% dropout rate and, and kids in gangs and graffiti and all the things that exist in this community. We're, we're just simply trying to do our part to address that big problem. And the way to do that is to do the extra stuff. You know, simply, my life would be much easier if I just did what's mandated by the state.
But as a point of clarification, uh, the other programs, the academies, the bootcamps, all of that, all of that is something that's authorized statutorily for the JPD to do, right?
It's all, we're authorized to do any, any and all of those above things. I'm just saying that what we're only required to do is provide probation services. And if we have a, an incarceration facility, you run the incarceration.
Okay. And am I right to say that the funding that goes from the, or for those other, let's call them adjunct programs, bootcamps, training, vocational training, the house project, I know that you all do, uh, routinely, does that, is that coming from the state?
That, that's through partnership. We don't get funding for that from the state. That's through collaborations with the cities and, and partnerships and, and creating some of our own revenues to be able to, to introduce that into the, our program and into the community. What I will, I, I do want to commend Bruce on record here, is, you know, we've had this issue where y'all strongly felt like we were a state agency and, and, and not a county agency. And, and the state insisted we're a county agency and not a state agency for, for quite some time. I feel like I, I've been on an island by myself with no one really supporting it. And so I, I know that Bruce got really involved in, in trying to help us with this issue, on his position on this issue. And recently, through his efforts and, and of course, all the, me badgering those people over there and badgering him all the time, we were fortunate enough to have the Attorney General's Office finally agree that in matters pertaining to the juvenile probation department, uh, regarding legal representation, that they would assume those responsibilities. So I do thank you for that, Mr. Hodge.
I appreciate that, and I, I, I don't mean to be rude, but trying to stay on the subject matter here. You know, to my knowledge, to my.
You know, let's stay on the subject matter. Do you have an interlocal ready? I mean, you had an opportunity to look at this agenda.
I do not have an interlocal ready, but I can have one in very short order, once I know what the charge would be for the service to be delivered.
Well, and my urgency and the reason I listed it as an emergency is that in, in about 35, 40 days, uh, I'm going to have 65, 70 kids from those neighborhoods coming over for an early prevention summer program, and, and it's hot in there right now.
Well, again, I'm going to ask Commissioner Garza to amend his motion, and you want to amend it with a MOU or maybe a charge of a dollar to?
Can we do an interlocal subject illegal? Would that be okay?
Yes.
We've done that before, we can do that.
In my motion, I'd like to include that an interlocal be drawn up subject illegal for a dollar worth of services.
Commissioner?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I think a dollar too.
Have a blessed day.
Thank you for all you do, Chief.
I, item K, consideration authorization to reprogram surplus project funds in the county's Hurricane Dolly disaster recovery infrastructure contract with the Texas General Land Office to offset a forced account, uh, forced account deficit in the county road damage repair. Repairs, excuse me. Who's going to handle, go ahead.
Judge, Frank, and commissioners, uh, our GLO disaster recovery contract that was, uh, provided for Hurricane Dolly damages on infrastructure projects is, is winding down. That contract will expire, uh, December of this year. Uh, so, so presently, all the projects that we had, and we had over 20, 22 projects in that contract. The contract was for about 11 point, uh, just, just around 11 million dollars. Um, so, so all of those projects except for one are now completed. Uh, and we have surplus funds, uh, available from some, some of the projects that, that were, um, had, had more money in there than, than what was needed. Uh, and, and there's a list of, of those projects that have surplus on, on the second page of what I gave you. Uh, because the contract is winding down, we, we cannot initiate, uh, new activities, we cannot undertake new projects. But the surplus monies can be, uh, reprogrammed to offset deficits in some of the other projects that went over budget. And, and looking at the road improvements that the county precincts did, uh, we, uh, are showing a, a deficit of, of $272,000. Uh, and we would like to reprogram the surplus, which is 330,000, uh.
To cover the deficit?
To cover the deficit.
We'll do approve.
Second, what happens to the 58,000?
We, uh, we, there, there are some options there. Uh, engineering, for example, we're showing them as part of the surplus because they haven't, they're not able to provide all their timesheets, uh, for, for the amount of time they spend on the project. But they can provide some timesheets, and so part of that surplus.
So you think that, Mr. Navozia, you think you can provide 58,000 dollars worth of time for us?
And, and if they can't do all of that, we, we can also use it in administration for the county. So, uh, there, there's options there.
Okay, so, but we can apply it toward, uh?
Either engineering or admin.
Which is easier?
Admin. We, we have time records.
Well, then do it. Can we include that on the motion?
I will amend my motion and include that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve this item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, sir. Item L, consideration approval of paying agent agreements for certain outstanding county obligations.
Uh, we received a letter from, um, BBVA Compass Bank. I think what's happening with that financial institution nationwide, they're getting out of that business. Uh, in the past, we've used the Bank of New York Mellon, and we've got a, a, an excellent relationship, um, with them. The county uses them, the RMA uses them as well. The, the last bond issue we did last year, uh, they are the paying agent. Uh, we've had no problems whatsoever with them, so I would recommend approval of the agreements, um, with the Bank of New York Mellon.
Second.
Have a motion second.
Question. Was this particular agreement with BBVA part of the bid process that we went through when we had them become our depository?
I, I have not looked at the depository agreement, but I'd venture to say no, because this is, this is out of the realm of a depository. This only would take place if there is a bond issue, but I don't know if there'll be a, looked at that.
No, it's outside of that particular agreement?
No.
Because I just want to make sure that the obligations of that agreement are being, you know, adhered to.
Right.
Wouldn't these have been done at the time that we issued the bonds?
Yes, we did.
So each, every time we issue bonds-
Yes.
-one of these agreements has to be entered?
Right, and that agreement is, is reviewed, actually, that agreement is drafted and approved by our bond council, and what you have before you today, the bond council approved.
Okay.
Yes.
Where was that? I didn't see that. Is there a document before?
I, I don't.
Was there a document?
I didn't get it attached.
I believe it was emailed to the court, but we might not have made hard copies.
Uh, I don't see, I don't have it, I don't think I've got one. I mean, is it, what, what, I mean, what's the main thing on it, like?
It's just basically replacing BBVA Compass Bank with Bank of New York Mellon.
Fees and everything stays the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's because BBVA doesn't want to do it anymore?
Right, they're, they're, they're getting out of that. And I'd venture to say it's not in the depository agreement, because if it was, they would have to have sent us a letter to amend the depository agreement to take that.
Because we, we had this in place before the depository agreement, right?
Right, but, but this really, it, it, it doesn't impact the depository agreement, because this only occurs when we sell bonds.
Okay.
And so it'd be out of the realm of, of the, of the depository agreement.
No problem. And the fees are the same pretty much?
Yes, everything's the same, and, and it was reviewed and approved by our bond council.
Okay.
I have a motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. For a presentation of proclamation honoring Mr. James, Edward James Olmos as the 2013 recipient of the court-appointed special advocate stand and deliver champion for children. Do we have, do we have that ready?
Yes, Judge.
Improve at least?
I believe so. I don't know if, maybe the judge's office has it, paid for signature? The, the proclamation or the reservation?
That's for next week, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's for the 22nd.
Chris?
Okay.
No?
I don't have it.
Chris took the day off too. I'm just the judge.
If you want to go to the next item, I'll print it out real quick.
Okay.
Okay, item-
Commissioner, real quick, before you get on to the next one, I just, on the, on item 3G, I know we were going to wait till after-
Yes, sir.
Um, executive session, but I don't know if there's anyone present here that, if maybe we could take comments before we go into executive session, if there's anyone present from the community of Combs that would like to address that, because after we come back from executive session, and, and nothing's aired on TV.
We can certainly go back to that, that's not a problem. Anybody here from Combs?
My question was going to be of, of the health department. I know that they have been spearheading, if I'm not mistaken, those learning centers. Is there a problem? Where will they go, or was it still being utilized for this?
Morning.
Morning.
Um, initially, the family learning centers were created by Commissioner Tamayo, and when the health department was restructured, the family learning centers inherited, well, the health department inherited the family learning centers, and so we became the, the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services. This family learning center in particular, in looking back at the files, was, was created in October 2004, and the health department was restructured in December 2004. In answer to your question, my understanding is, is that the, the community center that was housing a room, it was a room where the family learning center was, that that community center was housing a bigger program, Niños, and so Niños, I believe, is moving from the community center. And so because of that, really, the only, it's a, it's a smaller room, and so I don't think that the city of Combs wanted to, to continue to pay for something like the air conditioning. And so, so we initially did receive a letter from, from the city secretary from the town of Combs advising us that we had 30 days to vacate, and I, we got that letter in October. And so after, subsequent to that letter in, in October, we tried to be placed on the agenda, but we ended up being in just a, a public comment. Commissioner Sanchez was there, and so I just, because it was public comment, there was no communication between, really, between me and the, and the, the commission, but the, the, the city attorney was there, and he was, and he was asking me some questions, so I gave him a brief explanation. Really, in, in the end, we're talking about, about 12 students, that the, the bus drops them off, and it's, it's an after-school type of program, so for the most part, it's Monday through Thursday. And so the only problem, I think the only problem there was that there was a change in how that community center was, was being used, and so that's, I believe, what may have impacted the family learning center.
I guess my only question would be is, will, will these activities go somewhere else, or are you going to just dismantle it altogether, or?
We, we have looked into other locations, and the whole family learning center concept was based on partnerships.
Oh, okay.
Okay? It was the school that, you know, had agreed to drop off the children, it was an advisory board that was, had fundraisers to offset some of, some of the costs, and the city of Combs, their role was to incur the facility costs, and then, and then Cameron County's role was to, to actually have oversight of, of the children. And so we didn't get involved with any of the fundraisers, but our role was just the day-to-day operations of receiving the children and, and keeping them safe and making sure they did their homework and what have you. We do not, we, we, we have not found another location that would print, would provide same type services that the town of Combs was providing.
Okay, thank you.
What, what happened, Commissioner, is the town of Combs built a new city hall in pretty large building, and as part of their, I guess, building or anticipation of building a large structure, they moved what is the Niños program from where it originally was, and, and our learning center is in the building where the Niños program originally was, and that building consisted of a large room in the back, and then a smaller room in front. And that smaller room, it was kind of like an office, an extra large space in the front of the building that would allow for the occupancy of 12 students, and so that's why it was so, so small. My understanding is there's more students and more children that want to participate, but because of the constraints, we, we, we aren't able to accommodate more. So what happened is, when they built, when the city built their new building, they designated part of that new structure to be the new spot for Niños. And so in order to, I guess, fund the operation of that portion of the new building, they had to move Niños out of the old facility and into their new facility. When they did that, they took away the entity that was actually paying for the light bill in the old building, which was Niños. Niños was paying for the light bill, so it wasn't counting, costing the city any money to have the light bill paid in the structure where the learning center currently is. Now that Niños has moved out, there's no one to pay that electric bill, and they wanted the county to pick up the tab, but, but like Yvette said, that was the city's participation, was to put in the facility and the utilities. And so the partnership with the, the parents, I understand, work together, and, and they provide money for toiletries, cleaning supplies, and activity books, or whatever it is that the kids use. We provide the oversight, and the city was supposed to provide the actual facility. But once there's no one to pay for that electric bill, then they don't want us using or occupying the building anymore, and that's what I understand this notice is. One of the other issues I think that came up too is, it was the Primera Combs Learning Center, and really, Primera wasn't, I guess, participating, or there was-
Right.
-issue about Primera not participating, but my understanding is most of those kids were from Combs anyway, right?
Right. The name of the, the facility was Combs slash Primera, Family Learning Center, but he's right, the city of Primera did not financially contribute, to my knowledge, and all the children that were participating in that family learning center were from Combs.
Have we looked at maybe relocating to some of the Primera facilities, or do they have anything?
We have not done that.
Okay.
And, and I don't know that that would solve the parents in Combs' their concerns too.
And that, that's why I asked to bring up this item now, in case any parents or any people who are here from Combs that may want to speak before we go into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'll move to table the item for now.
We'll wait till after executive session.
Right.
After, after executive session, we can do that, Commissioner.
Okay.
Let's go back to, um, the one on Edward James Olmos, the-
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, presentation of proclamation declaring the month of May 2013 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Cameron County, Texas. You have a copy yet? Anybody here to receive that?
Yeah, we got a group there.
I do.
She'll get you right over here by the microphone, and she'll take you. Thank you for being patient.
Would any of you like to say anything? At the microphone?
Go ahead, go to the microphone, I'm sorry. Thank you, David.
Yeah.
Hi, good morning. My name's Lupita Ramos. I'm an APS specialist here in the Brownsville area. This is our unit, Unit 90 here in Brownsville. Just to tell the community to call the 1-800 number when they feel that somebody might be being abused, neglected, or exploited. That's the three main things that we investigate here in the area. Thank you.
First of all, before Sophie reads the proclamation, I want to thank you for all that you do, because people don't really notice those things until it's in the front page of the paper, and it's a thankless job, but we really, I have a lot of friends of mine that are elderly, and they certainly need people like you to, to be there for them when this happens. Sophie, Commissioner?
Thank you, ladies, for being here this morning. This proclamation be resolved that on the 25th day of April 2013, the Cameron County Commissioners Court convened in regular session, and upon the request of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, the following item was placed on the agenda of the said court for such meeting. To be considered, consideration and adoption of a proclamation declaring the month of May 2013 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Cameron County, Texas. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of this county by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas in 2012, there will, there were 98,290 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which 60,854 were confirmed. And whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our responsibility as citizens to reach out to people in need. And whereas Cameron County urges all its citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that the Cameron County Commissioners Court hereby declares the month of May 2013 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. Signed on this 25th day of April 2013 by Carlos Gascos, County Judge, Sofia Benavides, Commissioner Precinct 1, Ernie Hernandez, Commissioner Precinct 2, David Garcia, Commissioner Precinct 3, and Dan Sanchez, Commissioner Precinct 4.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it very much. Executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second to go into executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have items A through, A through D, under section 551072, property concerns. Items F, G, hold on.
GH and I more?
Yeah. H, I, and J, under sections 551071, and item K, under sections 551074. We'll be back.